And now we'll have the regionalization workshop. And we have Mark Abrams and his son Matthew Abrams to go over the report, findings. And then I believe from this point, what we will do is after we hear the summary, you have questions or what have you, after that, the school committee will actually have a discussion of what they feel the next steps are. And I also, what I brought with me tonight now, I'll pass these around after the presentation, is we've had from Mars previously, some steps of what you would do to amend the regional agreement and how you would proceed to amend your, because it's not a new region, it would be a regional amendment if you decide to do that. And I have all of the steps that were given to you previously as a review, should you decide to move forward, then we have some guidelines of what your next steps might be. Okay? So without further ado, I will have Matt and Mark take the floor.
Thank you, Nathan. Ready?
Good evening.
Our understanding is you have the report.
Correct.
Yes.
So we'll do an overview of the report. And if you have questions, we don't mind if you interrupt us as we go along. We may defer the answer until later. You've asked us to look at seven specific items. Go ahead, David. Staffing, enrollment, transportation, Chapter 71, and how does the additional elementary feeder schools impact transportation reimbursement? Same with Chapter 70, how does the feeder schools impact Chapter 70? So we basically simulated these four who worked with DESI to validate their numbers. How does the health insurance cost change? How do teacher union contracts change? The law doesn't require that negotiations must go to the higher, say for Berlin, for Boylston teachers, for health insurance. But logically, from a negotiation point of view, that would occur. So we basically compared health insurance costs, teacher union contracts, and did a workaround to really bring the lower scales to the higher scales. And finally, what would it do to operating costs, meaning basically your assessments? So those are the seven main areas that we have focused on. And then we prepared an executive summary to get to the two major points that we think are very relevant for this study. Thank you. We found very little changes coming up with staffing. And basically, if you regionalize or if you don't regionalize, the staffing would be basically the same. However, with transportation, transportation would allow you to be reimbursed for more students. And there is a range of transportation reimbursement, additional funds. We've selected the minimal amount that you feel comfortable with, and that amount could increase. You're also entitled to bonus aid on a sliding scale of $15, $40, $30, $20, $10 over 10 years. And part of your grade six is receiving some bonus aid on that as we speak, I think here in the third or fourth year of that. So that is in addition to what you would be receiving for bonus aid that you're currently receiving, assuming the state appropriates that money. Health insurance, $70,000 savings, additional costs for dental insurance, and moving the teachers' union contracts, simulating that. So additional costs, we're estimating $185,000. Additional revenue, $186,000. And cost savings through the regionalization of $79,000, bringing to a net revenue of $80,000, $81,000. And if the transportation reimbursement is higher than the 66% that we're using, which more than likely it would be, but we can't count on that, that number would go up, and we arranged it in the report later on. So that's one big picture item, that there are additional costs that you will incur, but simultaneously, you're going to see additional revenues, incur some cost savings at the same time. So we're projecting an additional net revenue should the feeder schools merge with your The second major point is the enrollment. Both towns are seeing enrollment decline. We're seeing in Boylston, a more rapid decline. Currently, the ratio was roughly 63% to 37%. And we're looking to fiscal '28, and that ratio shifts to 51% to 49%. Why did we select '28? Basically, looked at your enrollment and froze it and ran it for the current kindergarten class to graduate 12 years later, just to see how enrollment is going to impact your assessments. Your assessments are basically based on enrollment, so 60 plus in state, 63% of the operating assessment, Berlin 37%, and it's shifting to almost 50/50 over that period. Now, the assumption is just taking the current students. We know that the student makes a change over the 12-year period, but our point is that the enrollment, which is key to your assessments under your current agreement, is going to shift, and the shift to us is pretty dramatic. We'll then see the dollar impact down the road. We tried to simulate that, so you can see the shifts in the assessments. To do that, we know that your budget is going to go up on an annual basis. And it's been going up about 2.5% a year, so we made that assumption, that your budget's going to continually grow 2.5%. And part of the assessment formula is your minimum local contribution to the district. So we worked with DESI to come up with a simulation of that, to basically assume that at some point in time over this 12-year period, the Chapter 70 formula will get to pure equity. And thus, since you're both what we call 82.5% local towns, that your minimums are going to be based on 82.5% of your foundation budget. So we're assuming a 1% increase in the foundation budget to derive the local contributions. And that's a different assumption than your regional budget going up 2.5%. So Roger Hatch basically came up with a 1% inflation rate as a suggestion, and we have used that. So the two major takeaways is when you run the numbers, you should have a net revenue roughly $81,000, minimal, and that will go up, and we'll see the transportation numbers as we move through this report. And the second is that the enrollment shifts are going to change, change the formula from 63, 37 today to somewhere around 50/50. Questions so far? Yes?
Am I jumping ahead if I ask a question about the chart in the bottom?
Yeah.
Okay.
But you can ask.
No, I'll leave it in the report too, so we can speak about that.
Can I also venture to ask a question at this point? I'm still a little bit unsure about how the 51/49 was derived. You took the kindergarten mix today and use that as what the mix would be for the entire district. Is that what you're saying?
Not quite.
Okay.
We use today's enrollment.
Yep.
And just ran it out, and the kindergartners graduate 12 years later. If we can show you the chart, it'd be easy to see that visually, but conceptually, so anybody in grade one today would be grade two tomorrow or next year, grade three the following year, grade four the following year, et cetera. And you run that out, the kindergarten class graduates 12 years later. So look at it from 17, like a sliding linear scale.
Right. What would you use for the future third grade class?
Yeah, like after the kindergarten, when the kindergartners are seniors, where'd you get your number? Well, I know we have preschool numbers now, but say when the kindergartners are seniors, where'd you get your number for sixth graders?
Okay. We just took today's enrollment, froze it, and ran it out. So today's sixth graders would graduate 6, 4 years, and that stream would stop at that sixth year.
So in other words, when you're looking at the enrollment, what we have for kindergarten is the 12th grade in 12 years, so they'd be, what, 10th graders then is what you have? And so there's nobody underneath. We don't know what that projection is.
Right. But we made some assumptions, and we're trying to get at what-
Their assumptions are they just didn't take the enrollment. They didn't, they didn't assume that they'd be 24, 28 in third grade, is what they're saying. They didn't take it. So if you look at the chart, those areas are actually, are actually blank. They just took it and they brought it down. That's what they did for the enrollment. Based on, based upon the, if you look at like the page seven, when they look at the enrollment, based on what that change has been, that's what they pushed.
Have we ever seen a time in our history in which the enrollment percentages have been 51/49? Yeah. So the reason why is I think we need, need to be much more comfortable with how we came up with that, because I think a lot of things are based on that assumption. Right? And if it's on shaky ground, the rest of it's on shaky grounds.
Do we have a historical perspective on what those percentages have shown over the last, or can we, I'm sure we can get-
Yeah, I'm sure it's out.
The last 15 years to say, all right, what has the trend been?
Right.
Because yeah, if you look at the chart on a future page, and I'm jumping ahead, I shouldn't do that, but I did.
We all do.
It shows 33 in 25, 25 Berlin, 33 in Boylston, like that's sort of how we're the basis of that percentage, right? Well, you know, we can look at it all the way down, and there are very few that are that close, right, right through fifth grade.
Well, I think that's what we're trying to say, is that that's where the trend is. If you look at the fifth, the fifth grade, you're at, you know, they're going from 50, 51 to 40 to 34, they've got to 28. And then your next, your next year, Boylston has less students enrolled for kindergarten than Berlin.
We're in the, we had 52, 50, 50, 38, 35, 30, I guess.
So it's just dropping. And if you look, right, and if you look at, like I said, next year's kindergarten-
25, 25, 25.
Berlin just got another enrollment, so they're, they're a larger enrollment than Boylston. So, yeah.
I wouldn't suggest-
Don't get too excited with that, John, I know. But we, when you look at the projection, you look at the census, that's why they were comfortable to say, let's just feed out, lean out where we are, because that's the trend that we're starting to see. Can't go by the past, because the past-
Yeah.
-has had 50 and 40. You don't have that in your school. You've been, for the last four years, you've eliminated a classroom. You plan on doing that for the next two years, so.
The thing about that assumption is whether that's the percentage or it's something else, it's that whether it's a combined district or separate. Right? Because we're, you're still going to have the regional assessment for Tohato. Right? Although you wouldn't, in that case, you wouldn't be taking into account the elementary enrollment.
Right.
Correct? So, and that's where the cliff is, is on the elementary.
In six years, that number's going to hold true at Tohato, whether like regardless of regional level, that, that number is coming here, whether there's a full regionalization or not.
Right, but it doesn't address the elementary schools.
Right.
Because they froze the attendance where it is and just moved it.
Right.
Unless we don't see some of the developments that are planned in our towns, right? There's that, that aspect.
If the developments happen, I will tell you, I can tell you that the developments that's happening right now, what we know of right now, right, is that in Berlin, there's been a lot of talk of developments, but we haven't seen much action in those developments. I've been here for four years, and I'm still not seeing the action of those developments.
There is one.
There is, you're right, there is one.
Berlin Woods is up and running.
And, and that one is actually having, going to have children in that development.
Because those are entry-level homes.
Those are entry-level homes, and you're going to have children. So if anything, you're going to see a larger increase of population on your Berlin than what we even projected here. Boylston, there's two developments, and the one that's happening in Boylston, one of them that's happening up by Compass Point, there's children moving in, however, that's to sustain the population you currently have. Because if you look at your census, you have nearly any, hardly any births in your town. So if anything, that's sustaining your current population that you have coming in at the younger grades, to have two classes, because there's potentially, you could go down to one class. That, that's really where you're at. And the other development that I'm moving into on Perry Road, that development, so far, there's one family out of the nine homes that have children. That's it.
And what other regions?
And they're already enrolled in our school.
Okay.
So, and they have three children, and they're already enrolled in our school. So in regards to population-wise, when you think about this, I see this being, just based on what I'm seeing, I don't have my, my-
Crystal ball.
-crystal ball here, but I would anticipate, just by what I'm seeing happening right now, Berlin and Boylston actually switching their percentages. You know, I see Berlin having a larger percentage than Boylston, based on the growth that we're seeing in the two developments and where the families are at. So I think this is a conservative measure.
The enrollment numbers have a weird blip in them for Berlin in the fourth grade. Is there, it doesn't really make sense to me in that it's the one year, there's like this huge, from 16 to 17, it drops by 11?
Because look at that fifth grade class in 17 versus to 18. What you're looking at is FY 17 to FY 18, right?
Yeah.
It's that our current fourth grade is 35, they're in fifth grade the following year, they're in sixth grade, so they go up into Tohato the following year. That's why it's a, it's a decrease.
You can stagger on those numbers down. One more question, this stage. You indicated that both towns are at-
10 years ago.
-15. My understanding is that the three districts are at quite different numbers, right? So Boylston has always had a very low percentage of the, and then the region has had, I guess, a weighted average of the two towns. But my understanding that was around 25% to then 30 something at BMS? So how is it that their minimum contribution to, minimums are in Chapter 70? Or did I miss anything?
Okay, so the way Chapter 70 works, from a local effort point of view, there are two tests. One is based on what, which is based on your EQV, realized valuation, 50% and 50% on your aggregate income, the income tax paid out of towns to the state. And they do one test to come up with what they call a combined effort yield. But the state is formulating a district, a minimum of 17.5% of Chapter 78 of your foundation budget. So if you take the 70, the 82.5%, sorry, the 17.5% of your foundation budget, that would give you 82.5% local contribution toward that. So they compare what they call the combined effort yield to the, what they call the maximum contribution, the 82.5%. And whichever's lower is what they go with for your minimum local town line contribution. And then that's a portion between the districts to which you belong.
Boylston, I don't know what it is right now. It had not been, actually, the state had not been achieving their commitment in Boylston. We were not getting the 72.5. We were below that.
So both towns, your local contribution is based on 82.5%. The state is trying to get to what I call 100% equity, and they're not there yet, which is what I think you're referring to. And they haven't been there for many years. They have never, they're not going to get there anytime soon. Well, it started in 2007, so we're almost 10 years into this equity provision. The governor proposed 70% to get to that 100% equity. So we don't know. But it's fair to assume that sometime over this next 12-year period, you'll be at 100% equity. I mean, you're close right now. And then you would get the maximum. Is that a year away, two years away, three years away, four years away? Nobody knows. But we're getting closer, we're getting up to 70%, assuming the House and the Senate go along with that 70% factor.
I understand that. The, the challenge is there is what the state is proposing, and then there's what the state has actually been doing. And so for years, we have been getting, you know, lower than they started at BMS. They've started out at a much higher level, and my understanding is it's actually going to go down. The amount of time it takes for all this to equalize equity, I mean, I don't see that much movement in, in doing this. So realistically, speaking of the bottom level, it impacts difference. And so I think that factor is what the town is having to get, because I imagine that impacts the numbers.
So one of our comments in the report is that there would be no change in Chapter 70 relative to the towns not merging or merging, that the state, and I've talked this over with DESI, can't promise you that you would maintain the Chapter 78 from related laws to Tohato that you're currently conceiving. And I can go into more detail later if you would like. So we kept the Chapter 70 as far as this report goes. Again, these are our conversations with DESI.
I, I understand that's what you're doing, and I'm just kind of pointing out that the, the comparison with the, the prior years made up to now, that's, with that assumption that you're making in the report, leaves a substantial difference between what we actually conceived and what the assumption is, and that could swing these numbers quite. And so I just think that if we understand what the numbers would be if we saw that fiscal trend continue versus the assumption that it's going to.
So the way you do it now, you deduct Chapter 70 as common revenue, that leaves an amount to be assessed. Should you get more Chapter 70, then you would deduct more and have less to be assessed. The percentages wouldn't be changed in terms of the assessments, because that's based on the goal.
But the amount of, yeah, maybe, maybe. But so far, it's very good.
So help us understand, I mean, it sounds like the assumption remains the current and individualized, right? Kind of sort of, do you make this switch for Chapter 70?
Yes.
So for purposes of understanding the difference between if we regionalize and if we don't, it may not matter exactly. What I would like to understand is what, I want to be clear on what exactly the assumption is again about Chapter 70, because you just said that DESI would not guarantee that we would continue to get each of, what we would project each of the individual districts to receive if we combined into a region. So are they saying we'd get less because we're regionalized? Would, help me understand that.
To me, that makes, that's counter what DESI is trying to promote.
Right.
Promoting regionalization.
Right, there are free bonus money, right?
There are free bonus money, but they shouldn't be taking away Chapter 70 money from districts or towns that are trying to do more regionalization. That's counterintuitive. And I can show you the numbers, and I can show you why, the logic of why DESI might take away some Chapter 70. I can show you the logic of that at the same time you can see it.
So your assumption is, is that the entire region is going to get at the minimum the 17.5 or whatever that percent is?
Or putting it differently, that you would be seeing the same amount of Chapter 78 whether you regionalize or not the elementary schools.
And so you're assuming that the amount of Chapter 70 that the three districts currently get, you're assuming that amount will continue.
And that assumption, Mark, if I'm correct, is based on your discussions that you actually had directly with Christine Lynch from the Department of Education?
More specifically, Melissa King.
Melissa King, from the Department of Ed, actually explained to you how to figure out the calculation of Chapter 70, should they decide to amend their regional agreement.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and so you have to assume a certain amount in order to come up with the assessed amount, right?
A certain amount of-
Chapter 70.
Which is the same amount you're getting today.
And so-
Okay, which is less than that floor that we talked about.
Is effectively not, not factored in, because it's assumed that it's what it currently is for the three different schools, and it's effectively not factored into any change. Question? I think is not necessarily the ideal assumption, just because if we have, we've maybe averaged out the two, and we use like Toronto's number, that percentage we can find grows now, when it's all three schools, then there's more students getting a higher level of Chapter Seventy. I can't imagine that's not a big number that would be factored in for a number of years, because unlikely that they're going to turn around next year and say, oh yeah, you're all at the minimum, that's not way to do it.
Well, when going to some of those MARS meetings and talking to the people from MARS budget and Desi and stuff, you know, a lot of school districts are still over their target chair, and there's this big talk about held harmless and how the state won't take away that held harmless bit. So I think that we don't really need to worry so much about getting less than what we're getting currently.
That's right. Because of the how we'll get more either.
Pardon?
That's also why we won't get any more either, until we catch up, and we're so far away that it's going to stay the same.
So let me just throw out a number to you. Last year, we received a billion sixty-two thousand dollars in Chapter Seventy. The foundation budget plus the required district contributions gives you what is called Foundation Aid of seven hundred and sixty-four thousand. And what they do is they say, okay, that seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, is that more or less than what you had last year? It's less, so you're not going to get any more Chapter Seventy Eight on Foundation Aid. Then we go into the minimum aid calculation, and you get the minimum. Or is that delta? Between what you got last year, the million sixty-two, and the Foundation Aid is seven hundred and sixty-four thousand. In theory, you're giving too much aid based on how the foundation budget works. So you're held harmless, and it is held harmless for several years. And that's why Desi is saying to us, you're not going to get more Chapter Seventy Eight other than if they factor when you finally get to that full equity. But you're going to get that full equity whether you merge or not, don't merge, the elementary schools.
And so the assumption that maybe we would be going into this process to that there would be more merged percentage that now all students would get, that assumption isn't necessarily a reasonable assumption. It would be whatever the three are getting now is something to go by. Because I think, at least I had the expectation that if we have, I'm just kind of rounding off for you, if what Boilston is at, say fifteen percent, and Condo's at twenty-five, and then BMS is at thirty-five, the assumption was now all students would be at twenty-five if it was merged to the regional percentage, which, I mentioned, was its combination of its percentage. And so the thinking is that we would get more Chapter Seventy Eight as a region, as a full region. And what you're suggesting is that's not a reasonable assumption. Correct? Okay. I can only speak for me, but I know this is still intact. I don't think that's a huge assumption, that you shouldn't be saying, at least for me, that that's like a, I guess. Okay, sorry.
Any other questions at this time? So we're going to start with staffing, and I'm going to walk you through that. So now we're going to do a deeper dive into the chapter seven areas.
As, as we mentioned at the start, the district does not have any specific plans on staff within two years. We have discussed with the district that our plan is to eliminate one elementary school teaching position into the next few years. Analysis reflects that, whether we're looking at a region or a combined region as well. We put together a quick chart just to show what the cost difference would be comparing the elimination of those prepositions, if it were to take place in the current region, and if it were to take place in the Spanish region. And then ninety-four hundred-ish, that's down the bottom right here in the first table that we showed you, as well as the cost savings.
So that's the ninety-four hundred that you started mentioning.
We did want to focus a little bit on the flexibility that the district would gain with regionalization. The district is not able to deploy staff in matters that it could if there was a full totally localized system. So an example that we have here is that employees, zero point eight FTE, currently cannot be assigned equally to two different school buildings, since he or she will now receive benefits with that breakdown of that person's time. So instead, that person would have to be assigned to one of the buildings that these point five FTE in the time in order to receive benefits. In an expanded region, that would not take place, and district leadership would have the ability to move that individual out as it sees fit. It allows leadership to focus more on what is best for students and what is best for staff, which is something that leadership strongly desires. District leadership in regions eliminates the multiple power professional positions if the region is not expanded, whereas it likely would not need people in an expanded region. Another example of benefit that an expanded region would have. Also, training would be improved. An expanded region would allow the district to hire maintenance employees to replace their current custodial position, something that the district cannot do today with the current region. Again, additional flexibility that the district would gain with regionalization.
This is just a very small semantic point. The issue of not being able to deploy staffing resources and the issue of benefits, I bristle a little bit in the language that says district leadership wants to focus on what is best for the students and the less on what is best for the staff. I don't disagree that students are at the center of what we do, but in that particular situation, it's also a staff issue that would improve staff satisfaction as well. So the wording just kind of isn't a hundred percent accurate, and it bothers me a little bit in the messaging.
So have we valued these? When we look at the value for staffing, it's the ninety-four hundred. But these are other things, have we valued the impact of those?
We have not been understanding some of the possibilities.
One thing that seems somewhat counterintuitive to me is we would envision eliminating paraprofessionals if the region wasn't expanded. I would think you would be able to reduce them if it was expanded. Right? Would not need to be eliminated in an expanded region, right? So it looks like keeping it the way it is is going to cost us, it's going to cost us less than if we expand it, we would, right, we would have to maintain these resources.
I think what, I think the purpose of that, though, Tom, is to explain, there's two ways of looking at that. The purpose of that is by not expanding the region, we'd have to eliminate positions to actually be able to support some of the budgetary needs, the budgetary needs. Whereas if we expand it, we're able to allocate those resources to where they need to go, and so we'd be more apt to be able to meet the needs of our students in an expanded region. If the population goes down, we have to eliminate its, you know, FTEs of positions, whereas, and then it becomes more broken, and maybe that's just not more than the appropriate way there. But that's really, you're actually going to be less likely to be able to meet the needs moving forward of some of our students that are coming in, because of the way that we have to allocate our sources, our resources.
I guess what's counterintuitive to me is that the logical thinking is if you centralize, so you regionalize, you need less administrative type of support, paraprofessionals or things like that, than when you are in a more decentralized mode. You need more administrative type of resources to support that. That's what this, what kind of is counterintuitive to.
But paraprofessionals aren't administrative.
Okay, so maybe that's not the right word, but you would still think you need less. You would still think you would need less if you're in a centralized environment, right?
Those sentences confuse me too. But I think what you're saying with the paraprofessional example is that they could be better allocated to where the need is.
In a region.
In a region. So it's more the staffing need.
That's more the way it should be worded.
Yeah, I think it's difficult without evaluating these things too to say, you know, the only thing we have in there for staffing is ninety-four hundred.
I think, Tom, what they're trying to say, and I think what they're trying to say is the need wouldn't change, our abilities to meet the need changes. I think that's what they're trying to say in those two sentences. So the need would actually remain fairly constant because of the children's, the students' needs. But our ability to afford that need, or again, the ability to, again, move people in half positions in point threes and point fives and whatever.
If you're not flexible with the staff, you would think you actually probably need less to support the same need.
Hmm, yeah.
That's the logic.
Yeah, that's faulty logic. Not because you're a faulty logician, but because of the way it works out in the schoolhouse. I think it's more practical, yeah, I don't even know how to articulate it. I understand why you think that way, I absolutely get that, but that logic doesn't work because that's not how it works on the ground. And if I could think of how to cleverly say it later, I'll let you know.
Anything else in staffing? Makes us more. All right, so we'll do a deeper dive into enrollment. We heard some of your talk there.
Because we jumped ahead.
Fair enough.
Now, for the enrollment, we have put together some tables here. We're only showing the current year and the next three years in these tables. As we talked about at the beginning of the presentation, we did project enrollment out several years, mainly it was a role of looking at what the assessments might look like way out of that line here. We don't have all the enrollment numbers that we use for that here, we're just looking at the next few years. So the top table has the lens projected enrollment over the next few years. You can see the slight decrease in numbers going from the current year to FY nineteen, whereas with Boilston, if you compare the two tables, you see a much larger decrease over the same time period. And we put a table together showing the combined elementary schools, if you were combining the two prior tables, which is showing enrollment. Whereas on the hospital table, you can see that enrollment is just a little off over the next few years, which has forty-five students between nineteen and current year.
This is now taken to the current school choice, right?
No, this is your, your.
Residential.
That's right, it's your actual population in your residence.
So the percentage is on, we have seventeen percent decrease at the elementary school level by school year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, whereas over the same time period, Condo's enrollment is five thousand percent.
That's why.
Nadya, confirm that. So the enrollment numbers are only residents?
Only residents.
Even the actuals, because of, okay.
They're only residents, yep.
We'll get to the how many years enrollment, so we get to the last section of assessment. Transportation based, transportation reimbursements under Chapter Seventy-One is based on transporting students greater than a mile and a half from these schools. Your estimate for fiscal sixteen is a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Fiscal seventeen, Chapter Seventy-One, proposed by governors, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. In fourteen regions were reimbursed at sixty-six point four percent. So you heard us earlier talk about Melissa King for Chapter Seventy. Jay Sullivan and Desi is encouraging for transportation, transportation reimbursements. He suggested using sixty-six point four percent, which is his suggestion, that's what we carried here. We're also going to show you what if that rate was seventy percent, eighty percent, ninety percent.
What is the, what was the last percentage on the last house, weighs and means for FY seventeen? Do you know?
I don't remember.
Do you remember, does it was higher than that?
I think it was, wasn't it more like seventy-three, something like that?
Okay, so when we get to the chart, seventy-three between the seventy and eighty percents. All right, just hold on.
Can I ask a question about that? Do you know in the last ten year history, historically, has transportation reimbursement ever been lower than sixty-six percent? Does anyone have to know that?
Can I get that? But I don't know that.
I'm guessing if the guy from Desi or wherever told you to use this, I'm guessing he would tell you to use a conservative number, but I'm just wondering if.
Yep. All right, so the technical side of this, scroll down a bit. The technical side of this is when Julie completes the end of the year report, she's doing an end of the year report for all these schools. And one of the schedules is Schedule Seven, which breaks down the students that are being transported greater than a mile and a half, less than a mile and a half. And from there, we're able to determine that eight hundred and fifty-eight students in all three schools qualify, which is ninety percent of the students. So you basically take your budget, multiply it by the reimbursement rate, multiply it by ninety percent, to get to the transportation reimbursement. And then you subtract that from today's reimbursement estimate, and that's how we derive that excess of a hundred and twenty-two thousand. So what if it was seventy percent? Hundred and thirty-five thousand. What if it was eighty percent? Hundred and seventy-four thousand. What if ninety percent? Hundred and ten thousand. So if the discussion is now around seventy-three percent, you would be around a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty-two thousand, which would be twenty thousand dollars more than the conservative hundred and twenty-two. Questions on Chapter Seventy-One?
And that hundred and twenty-two is compared to what we currently are getting?
Over and above what you're currently getting.
That's the annual. That's the annual revenue?
That would be the annual revenue from chapter seventy-one. And again, if it's higher, then it's incrementally higher over that hundred and twenty-two.
Am I correct in assuming that that's predominantly because transportation money is not currently available to Berlin Memorial and Boylston?
That's correct.
So the bump up is simply because it's a region, essentially?
Correct.
Got it.
And you would think, this is me talking. You would think that they'd want to get that factor higher and higher to encourage more regionalization. But the reality is we're running around sixty-six to seventy-three, seventy-four percent this year. That could go higher. But there's your range. And again, selected the one twenty-two to be conservative. Questions on? Recent bonus aid. Chapter seventy-one, section sixteen D. And if you go down to the chart. Except year foundation enrollment from fiscal seventeen. Applied the first year, twenty-one thousand. So fifty dollars times four thirty. Second year, third year, fourth year, fifth year. Add it up, and we came to roughly, what was that, sixty? The number was about sixty thousand.
Sixty-four thousand.
Sixty-four thousand, yeah.
Pretty straightforward. Again, you receive bonus aid when you merge the grade six into the Hondo for that. But these numbers don't reflect those numbers.
Bonus aid goes away after five years, then?
Yes, and it's subject to state appropriation.
So then the sixty-four thousand five hundred is a aggregate of what we would get over five years.
Correct.
But in the calculation, we put it as one lump sum, not as the annual, right? The annual average would be, what, thirteen thousand revenue from it?
Okay.
When we're showing it as additional revenue, the sixty-four thousand five hundred is perceived from the annual.
Okay, we've been introduced that every year. Okay, going back to chapter seventy-one, that you have a hundred and twenty thousand.
Yeah, good point.
That's a good one. We use the average.
The average over the five years would be...
Yeah, like the thirteen thousand that we said.
Twelve thousand five hundred per year for five years. It gets to sixty-four five.
By the way, there is a workbook for chapter seventy-one. There is a workbook for chapter seventeen. There is a workbook for your current fiscal seventeen. Next one's in chapter seventeen. That contains up to ten spreadsheets within each one of these workbooks for additional detail. So earlier I mentioned to you the chapter seventy, about a million dollars, and the foundation budget and the local contribution. That was just the Tohanto. If you look at Berlin, if you look at Boylston, you are getting chapter seventy monies for your elementaries today. But it's the same scenario, that what you received last year is greater than the foundation aid calculated on both Berlin and Boylston. And thus, when you put the three together, or you keep them separate, it's the same chapter seven. So here, we're saying total chapter seventy for the expanded region, a million nine, two million dollars, is equal to the sum of the aid for the existing Berlin, Boylston, and Berlin, Boylston districts. While the math works, it's no guarantee that the expanded region will receive this amount due to the fact that the combined chapter seventy-eight is greater than the expanded region's foundation aid. And it should just be foundation aid. So I can go into spreadsheets again, but I think this reinforces what we talked about earlier. But I think you'd be comfortable with that and understand why you believe you're not going to receive more and not less than what you receive today. So it's revenue neutral for this discussion.
So a question on, but just to give you some perspective and a little bit of stuff on the other point. What's the difference in the DSEMS and current enrollment? Is it about a hundred students?
It's about a hundred, hundreds of students.
Very, very complex data.
Yes, a hundred and seventy.
And then how much, how much total are we, you know, if, let's say, the, the, those hundred students were to increase for, let's say, fifteen to twenty-five percent? What scale are we talking about? Is it like... Are you talking... Yeah, how much is it per student for, say, fifteen percent in, 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 in Boylston versus per student at the Hondo? And again, that's probably kind of an influential question or if you guys have an understanding.
I'm not understanding any questions.
I'm trying to figure out if, if DSE were to come up with a new percentage for the combined district. In theory, we're, we're helped by this. And, and so it wouldn't be less than the, the one ninety-nine or whatever. If we were to regionalize and if we were to have, if we were to, say, average to twenty-five percent directly for all the students in the three districts. I'm trying to figure out what the net impact would theoretically be if you went by that calculation versus just assuming that one point nine is something like that. Okay, is so... Like if it's solely a few thousand, it probably doesn't even matter.
Can you bear with me for a minute, please?
Yep.
The way these numbers work is you submit a foundation enrollment to DESI, in this case, a hundred fifty-five for Berlin to seventy-five for Boylston. And you submit that pre-K, kindergarten, after-day or full day, and the elementaries, in this case, elementaries. Each of those categories or grade levels has a, a rate associated with it. And that rate is then calculated by eleven different foundation budget lineups to come up with a total foundation budget, of which the state will pay seventeen and a half percent. And you pay the eighty-two and a half percent. So whether Berlin stays as an elementary or joins a region, it's the same rate and the same calculation for a foundation budget. So I don't, I don't know if you're getting the twenty-five percent element. And then you put the three together, and your last year's chapter seventy-eight is greater than this year's foundation budget. So you ran that in to last year's as if you would be if you remained three separate districts.
I understand that. That's not really getting my question wrong. But I, I understand probably asking something that kind of calculated.
Can I just ask a question about the foundation enrollment? Those numbers are different than what we're looking at here. So I'm wondering, does that include students who may leave the district?
Okay, so the difference is foundation enrollment includes students that choice out and charge out. Whereas your residential enrollment is just students that live in your district and go to your school.
Okay, that's...
So the difference is different. Okay on chapter seventy?
No, we hate chapter seventy.
Nothing against you, Mark, or Matt, just understanding.
I've taught it since nineteen ninety-four. And I have a saying that things get clearer, they don't get clear. Particularly with chapter seven. All right, health insurance costs. Matt will walk you through what we did and how we came up with our numbers.
Yes, well, we talked about health insurance and dental insurance. What we did is we compared the premium costs for Berlin and Boylston separate districts to the region's premiums. And we made some calculations about moving the employees from the Berlin rates, the premium rates, and the Boylston premium rates to the regions and add it up what the differences would be. And we presented these tables here. So FY seventeen is the first area where you can see a difference.
So health insurance goes down, dental goes up a little, so?
Health insurance goes down about twenty-three thousand per year. Whereas dental insurance goes up about thirty-eight hundred per year. But the total difference over each of the three years being this number here and this number here. Just wanted to quickly point out that these numbers do not count for retiree health insurance. With the moving of teachers in case counts, we were talking about short... We, the Berlin teachers currently do not have retiree health insurance, but presumably would in an expanded region. But it's difficult to project costs associated with that because the district may not know if a lot of teachers retire. So we didn't include any of those costs here. Just wanted to quickly point that out.
Questions on health insurance?
Question, it kind of goes back to my previous question too. On, keep going back to the executive summary and how we're calculating that, that amount and then what we have in the details. We used a cumulative three years to get to the seventy and eleven. But we're all then comparing it to also single year. So I think we need to, I would actually like to see it as single year, right? What's, what's that savings then? So what it brings to the forefront, right? Brings it down to probably twenty-three thousand dollar cost savings for the health insurance and more like three thousand or so or four thousand on the dental insurance cost. This way then when we're comparing the transportation with that in annual and the other things...
Good point. Any other comments on the dental?
So in calculating differences between the current business and the case counts associated with that, the future received salaries, and an expanded region's scales and the teachers who presumably receive the salaries. We had to make certain assumptions. The ultimate assumption being that ultimately all teachers would end up on the Tohanto scale, which is different than the Boylston scale and different than the Berlin scale. The Boylston, the Boylston teachers presumably would move to the Tohanto scale immediately before, in the first year of an expanded region. Whereas the Berlin one, teachers likely would not because it most likely needed a decrease for those teachers. So what we put in here was to have those teachers remain on the same scale and not receive a pay increase until they were to, until the Tohanto scale where the quota will catch up, such that the Berlin teachers would then move to the Tohanto scale once the Tohanto scale was at equal pay or higher than that. So we projected that to be a few years down the road.
We should probably just comment that this is obviously subject to collective bargaining.
Yeah. So we put together a few quick, quick calculations here and the tables you can see in front of you. Top table represents the current scenario, which has the district as separate regions. And the total teacher salaries would be in those years. And then in a combined region with those assumptions that I just mentioned, current for FY sixteen, but the new scales or the move, the shifting of teachers on two different scales would, would start to take place in FY seventeen and continue to be something that is as well. And then a comparison between the two. So down at the bottom, the first year, we expect there to be initial costs of about sixty thousand dollars for the teachers and the, the savings associated with that. But Boylston teachers would see an increase because they're shifting scales. Totally about sixty thousand first year, about fifty-three thousand in the second year, about sixty thousand in the third year, or cumulative total of about a hundred and seventy-four thousand.
And I just wanted to let the committee know too that we did in the past when we changed our regional agreement to include sixth grade, we did have some Berlin teachers that did move up here to Tohanto. And they don't, they've gone up in the scale, in the step as they would anywhere else. If they were still in Berlin, they would still go up in their step. But they have not necessarily seen a pay increase until they reach to the point of what their pay has been in Berlin. So even though, so if somebody was a master's five, but they were getting paid eight or nine thousand dollars more than our master's five here, they still get paid what they were getting paid in Berlin. But then the following year, they moved to master's six, if that's still more than what they were getting paid in Berlin, they're getting that same pay. So some may not have seen a pay increase over the last three years. They might have gone up in the step, but they're not quite where Tohanto is yet.
Okay, so what you're saying is some of the teachers have already experienced out this kind of scenario that we're putting up here?
Yep.
So, Tom, we asked, in that same vein, if we use the three-year, we would use the fifty-nine percent?
I would think we would, right?
Yeah. There was conversation at one point about the fact that you don't have to make whatever adjustments you're making in the contracts. You don't necessarily have to do that all in one year either. That you could theoretically spread it out over two or three years to sort of reduce some of the impact.
As you said...
That's correct.
...what department. And legally, you don't have to do this at all. But practically? So these numbers assume the, the changes that you have. Then we would move the E S up to Tohanto scale and accumulate that to fifty-one percent. And then Tom mentioned earlier that one seventy-four is just a cumulative three years. Although it looks earlier like it was per year. And then for the Berlin teachers, if they went to the Tohanto scale, they would be, we assume it would be just like we did previously with the sixth grade.
Right, so Mass General Law basically states that if you can change your regional agreement due to a reconfiguration of your regional agreement, staff cannot get paid less than what they were paid in the previous year. So they would maintain that salary and you could just wait until they catch up to that salary line.
Right, and I think anyone would suggest paying someone less.
Less, right.
It's just a matter of the way we approach and kind of bring everyone to parity.
Yep.
And that's where, again, there'd be a lot of money that would be possibly tied up in that or not. It would look somewhat confusing at times, which we have to negotiate.
Right, and you know, I mean, districts have done it so many different ways when they've done this regionalization from what I've been told by other superintendents. And you know, some ways of helping, say, somebody, a district that gets paid more, for example, they might either maintain whatever that difference is between the two districts. If it's, looks like it's a very long time, what they might do is give that district a very minimal increase, or at least they're getting something, but it's not as significant as the other schools until they catch up. So there's so many different ways that you could negotiate and figure out what the solution would be in that area. But you're right, the money would be tied up in the process of that.
Well, because this was probably the single biggest thing to, to regionalization, you know, it would be the largest cost associated with this. We would report how we get there pretty critical. Because when you're, you are essentially erasing most of your costs, the cost savings that you would otherwise have had. And so if we can be taking that, and really it's not three, it's only three, it's just a cumulative for three years, but some of the assumptions would change those numbers dramatically. So even more, better. Which is sort of what I'm understanding, you know, we're looking at the bottom line here, and that, that line is, is based on all assumptions that people make. And one of those things that we choose differently is the answer that I got, having to. Questions on this? All right, so pulling it together into your assessments. The biggest impact is the ratio going from sixty-two, sixty-three, thirty-seven to roughly fifty-one, forty-nine. That then impacts the assessments. And whether it is fifty-one, forty-nine, really, there is a trend where Boylston's percent of total is reduced and Berlin's increases. You saw that in the first three years. And we're seeing it throughout the twenty-year period. So Matt will walk you through some numbers associated with that. And hopefully we can make things clearer as we go through this.
This paragraph here is detailing the same assumptions that we talked about at the beginning of our presentation. There's a little bit of information about the assessments in the executive summary here, so they include the assumptions in one place. So it's the same type of assumptions with the two-point-five percent increase in the operating budget we talked about prior. The one percent E P S, he suggests inflation rate for the foundation budget is year-end as well. And the foundation budget produces the calculated minimum contribution and make up hardly adjusted. So the top area here with a few tables were our calculations for the assessments for FY seventeen. Yep, completely. And the table on the left, part of the left shows the current region. So we calculated, the top line there, it says elementary, it's not the assessment itself, but that's what the towns paid for other schools. Whereas the line below that, the Tohanto line, is the assessment for FY seventeen here and the total amount. To get the amounts just below that, and we put a percentage on that as well to show what each town is paying as a total of all towns, of both towns paying. And I did calculations on what the assessments would look like if everything was combined. And that's something, right? And a percentage breakdown as well there. As well as a difference just below that to show that in a combined region, Boylston would be paying about five-hundred thousand dollars more, FY seventeen more, and Berlin would be paying about six-hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars less.
So do you want to sign up for that?
Well, actually, I think I understand how we got there first. So in theory, as, I guess it's just not adding up to me, there's population shift and the assessments will be based on the enrollment percentages, right? That's one of the key things. And so as we're hearing about how the Boylston enrollment is going down as a percent of the, as a percentage of the total enrollment, yet the assessment is going up? And maybe I'm just missing it.
This is just FY seventeen, so this doesn't account for any of the enrollment changes that we've been talking about. The top area is comparing.
The total assessment now reflects the population.
The population has been.
Which, which right now, it does not because, I mean, if I'm correct, we're paying slightly less per student in Boylston today compared to Berlin at the elementary level, right?
Yeah.
Am I correct? So, yeah, so, but, so when they come together, the all-in is for all ages, right? We own sixty-two percent of the population, so we have to cover the full sixty-two. We're now, we're not putting that much out in town relative to our elementary.
So the immediate term cost is up for Boylston? Is we're taking on some of the higher per student costs from the beginning?
Yeah.
At least initially.
Interesting.
And then, I mean.
Correct.
And that is out over time. This total of, but the FY twenty-twenty-eight numbers didn't balance out as much as I expected. So I guess I'm trying to understand over that period, in theory, that you had this huge change in the, in the enrollment percentage. At the same time, all of the case scales and everything else should have eaten down to balance. And so why does that?
It wouldn't have been fifty-one, forty-nine, twenty-eight.
Well, Boylston is considered a wealthier town, so they will, they will always be paid more without a whole of overtime. The numbers are far better than that.
Isn't the assessment simply on the, on the school budget? And the, and how much of that is, is portioned based on student population? So there have the towns' factor. So in pure dollar terms, Boylston is paying more than Berlin. Because it has more students, more foundation budget, more of everything. But on per pupil, Berlin is paying more. Per pupil, you factor in the lower enrollment. That's next. Now, so going out of twenty-twenty-eight, in theory, that changes. But at the same time, both Boylston and Berlin are at eighty-two and a half percent. So in the eyes of the state, with the eighty, with the seventeen and a half percent mass, or I should say minimum share state aid to foundation, the state looks at you. That part makes sense. So with decreasing enrollment and, and the state looking at it equally. And I'm still understanding why that doesn't balance out by twenty-twenty-eight.
It not necessarily balanced, but just reflect through, or assume the population.
Right. But I still don't see where we're getting, so we have still.
Yeah.
And perhaps this is accurate, and I just don't understand what's behind it. And I'm hoping you can explain it to me because I like to be able to, to look at these numbers and, and just.
So is it, is it because, I'm lost in the fog, so this is probably going to sound like a man lost in the fog. Even though Boylston's enrollment is declining and Berlin's is very slightly increasing, still, when you get to twenty-twenty-eight, Boylston still has fifty-four point seventy-six percent of the enrollment, even though you're losing students. Is that wrong?
Not in the projection initially, it was fifty-one point one or something like that.
Okay.
Three or four percent gap is my, I'm kind of hung up on the same area that it's not, it's not huge.
On a three percent?
Yeah, yeah. It's directionally being closer, it's just not. Where's the, why did it get hung up and not come fully together based on the assumed population?
You would think if we're at fifty-four enough that you'd expect the assessment to be fifty-one, forty-nine.
Well, that's how it's determined, right?
That's why this is.
And that's why we're all.
Right, so that's what's not working.
The minimum local goes first, though. I think Boylston, because they're wealthier, is always a little bit higher.
So.
The minimum local is always a little bit higher in Boylston.
Okay, sorry.
So that's we pay that first, and then everything above that is then allocated.
So even though they would be in a regional district, their relative wealth as a community requires that they pay slightly more.
Because they're a wealthier district.
Because they're wealthy.
Mark, did you just say from correct that they, in the eyes of the state, they don't even look at that?
Okay, so three things. Well, maybe I get a little bored here. Today is, Boylston has, what, sixty-two percent? That derives a bigger foundation budget. That derives a bigger local contribution. That's going to start sliding where the percent changes. So the minimum required district contribution is going to still go up, but Berlin's will go up at a faster rate than Boylston's over time. A, Boylston has the most kids, bigger foundation budget. So if you just look at that, you'd say Boylston is the wealthier community. But that's a little skewed because of the, the foundation budget is so high. As Boylston starts to lose students faster than Berlin, that dynamic is going to start changing. So that's one view. The second view is that both communities by the state are eighty-two and a half percent, local contribution seventeen and a half percent, state target shooting. So you can make the argument that the state looks at both communities of equal wealth, seventeen and a half, eighty-two and a half. When you take the wealth factors and then divide that by the enrollment of each town, Berlin has the higher per pupil, which is what you've seen over the last several years. So you could look at the chapter seventy numbers and look at contribution numbers three different ways, all of which are correct. Which is why things don't get clear, they get clearer. Each one of those, not arguments, but each one of those points are valid points. It's just how you view the chapter seventy. But I think we can all agree that the shift in enrollment is clear. Whether it lines up at these percentages or not, that's not clear today. But the impact that has on assessments will have a big impact. And if you just understand that, you're going to start seeing the shift in enrollment, you're going to start seeing the shift in assessments moving forward. That part totally equates.
I'm making serious things even further for folks, I apologize in advance, but in a case where we're a combined region, it's split fifty-fifty down, it'd be a middle population, right? We're bringing half to the table, Berlin's bringing half to the table, everyone's, there would be, the reality would be because we are assessed as a wealthier community, Boylston, we would technically probably pay a little bit higher percentage of the total. Is that correct?
If you were fifty-fifty in enrollment?
I mean, based on the minimum local contribution, is that, so we technically need to bring, our contribution as a community needs to be higher, slightly, not, not, it's not huge, but, okay. Even though this might seize us as equals because we're a combined region?
That would be correct.
Well, at that point, have the same foundation enrollment. You'd have the same foundation budget. The eighty-two and a half would be the same number. And you wouldn't be paying more. At fifty-two percent, at fifty-four percent, now you've got the higher foundation budget and eighty-two and a half gives you a higher local.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, that's, that's it. So it's not a straight line, it's a curve. That's the whole, the whole reality of it is, it's a little curve in there, it's not linear.
Yes.
So just.
It's not perfect.
What's being shown right now, does it give me this curling?
Right.
Regionalize, don't regionalize. What's Boylston, the effect on Boylston's assessment? Can you just scroll to maybe see?
Okay, I should say that, that's what the rest.
That's for seventeen.
Okay, but combined region doesn't mean merge, it just means, is that what you're saying?
It doesn't mean.
It means.
So in a merged region, the impact of Boylston is a half a million more and almost seven-hundred thousand less.
In the first year.
It is a little bit surprising, the magnitude of that.
Any other total dollars, I assume there would be a reflection like that and it would be that, well, is anywhere on home of the fire, you're carrying it. Well, is anywhere on home of the fire, you're carrying it?
We want our expensive elementary school. So you're assuming that cost as part of the combined, right? Because our per pupil, right, what we pay per pupil is greater than what you're paying per pupil, just for your elementary schools. So it costs us much more to operate an elementary school than it does Boylston.
And will be absorbed in some of those costs.
Now, if you combine it, you share that, and we benefit from your more efficient.
Wealth.
Are there scenarios where, I mean, obviously, if you bring this to the Boylston selectmen, and they're going to say, why would Boylston want to regionalize? We can't afford to regionalize. Are there scenarios where you look at formulas differently? You look at ameliorating some of those jumps? I guess I'm asking, I don't know, who knows? The answer to that.
I think that the, I've approached this, and I'd be careful of this, my entire approach to this is purely on the ability to manage personnel, deliver proper curriculum, student-focused, realizing that, you know, that that's what's in our heart and our core, why we want to accomplish it. And that is something that will not, and I don't think would ever bear out perfectly in numbers. But unfortunately, we're in towns where the numbers are, we need to have a really, really strong argument and reason why it benefits our students in the long run. There needs to be a lot of language supporting it, because to go to the school and to the town and say, hey, it really makes a lot of sense, we're going to, we're going to help our kids, but it's going to cost everyone what a half million dollars more, they're going to go, oh, okay, why? And that's where we really need to figure out, and we need to sit down and understand. I think, I think we all want it to be better for the kids, that's why everyone spends their time doing this, that's why they're here. We got to figure the numbers part of it.
Right, and your Boylston, would you say, I'd rather take that half million dollars and invest it in my elementary school to get a better elementary education than to spend more money and get what I have today?
And the challenge then is that there is that half million dollars, I'd rather do it best. And there's, and there's, trying to be careful how I say things, I think I can top what Tom said, so. The, the, the challenge comes in is, how do you justify? We know we have a problem with retaining staff, that's our problem. We know we have, you know, issues with resource allocation. What scenario, I can't think of, can we make an argument to the town to put that kind of money out to resolve issues that they don't really see?
Well, no, the only thing, and Mark and Matt, please correct me if I'm wrong on this, but when I look at the bottom chart, when you're looking at this, this is the one on the left, if you look at Boylston side in two thousand, you know, you look at the total of, why am I, why is my?
This might be a different chart, there's another chart on the next page, is that what you're looking at?
I'm looking on page six, okay, so yeah, I'm down a little further, I guess.
Do that one.
When I look at this one, correct me if I'm wrong, but if I look at Boylston under the current regionalization agreement, you'd be paying one point six million dollars, whereas if you did a combined region, Boylston would be paying one point four million dollars.
That's correct.
Okay, so actually, if you look at that from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-eight, given the projection, if you go into a combined, you're going to be paying more no matter what. It's just how much more between two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-eight. To me, I'd say, well gee, if I'm in a combined region, it's Boylston, I'm paying less as a region, it's actually Berlin that pays more as doing a combined region. So then the question becomes, why would Berlin want to join? Right? Am I wrong on saying that?
So this table of this, look at it from a different angle, as I mean, is alluding to here. So the left-hand side, we're comparing the total, what's projected to be paid total, total of each town, FY twenty-eight compared FY seventeen. So you see the difference between the two, on the left-hand side, in the current region, you see the same comparison in the combined region on the right-hand side. And another way to look at, what I mean, what I mean was just saying is, if you total them up, you take a percentage on the left-hand side, of the four point two million dollars additional that would be paid over that time period, Berlin has, would account for sixty-two percent of that, and thirty-eight percent of Boylston in the current region, whereas in a combined region, a little different story, Berlin's actually taking, picking up a larger percentage of the additional costs that will take place over that time period.
Can you also?
You're taking a snapshot of each of those two time points, so.
Right.
If, and, and that's very, it will show a sizable difference over time, but if you add up how much each town paid each year in each of those scenarios, because we'd have to make a case for why over time, you know, that the cumulative, we were having issues earlier with annual numbers and cumulative numbers, and that's a issue. But that, that's kind of like an artificial number, you'd be taking these, the snapshot of FY twenty-eight, the snapshot of FY seventeen, but as I said earlier, it's curved, it's a straight line. So what each town has invested more or less over time would be important to know. Because you have to have a way to sell, because you don't get an FY twenty-eight, but when you couldn't get past FY seventeen.
I think if you see the spreadsheet and chart literally showing including all of the numbers, and I know that we've questioned some of the numbers, that there was a sixty-four thousand, which is an accumulation, that's not an every-year thing, like that's, we put it as one year, but there's a number each year. But to see that chart for like ten years.
Year by year.
Of what it would be if we're paying individually, there's assumptions in all of it, we know that, but projections.
Can we also talk a little about, we talked about what some of the other districts have done to try to level this off? I don't think we put it in the report, but we did talk about, so I guess you have some examples of some other districts, what they've done to try to
I'm assuming.
become a region without, you know.
All these regions that get together don't, they're not equally weighted towns, there's always going to be a.
That's right. So there are ways that other districts have done it, where they've tried to level it out and kind of not have this huge impact right away.
So a couple of thoughts.
Didn't I ask that question? No one answered it? Okay.
So number one, we, we didn't jump from two thousand seventeen all the way to two thousand twenty-eight. We did this incrementally by year. We couldn't get it on one page. We can show you that, we have that on Excel. Number two, different regions have addressed their regional agreement in so many different ways. And if this concept of regionalizing the feeder schools makes sense to you, there are ways to address the regional agreement and the assessments to make these numbers come closer. Think of how you're assessing today, where you basically got an assessment methodology for capital, and you've got an assessment methodology for everything else called operating. You could split out transportation from the operating, which is now being assessed on enrollment, and make it more relevant to transportation, say bus runs or bus miles for students greater than a mile and a half, and see what that does to your assessment, and see what that does to the five hundred seventeen thousand to Austin, and the negative six hundred plus thousand to Berlin. And then you could do other breakdowns of your assessments to look at things differently. So there's ways to take your assessment methodology and come up with alternatives. I just gave you one, two, or three of them there. There's different ways of taking your operating assessment as is and allocating it differently. Instead of resident enrollment, foundation enrollment, or other types of enrollment, stay with the enrollment name, and see what those numbers do to your assessments. When we did Air Shirley, which was the first regionalization in Massachusetts since Essex Manchester, which was big in the early nineties, Air Shirley had a similar gap between the two communities. It was bigger, it was about eight hundred thousand. And they decided to allocate that difference over time so that, so that, I forget which was, which had the eight hundred thousand and which had the negative eight hundred thousand. But to take that eight hundred thousand and allocate it to the other community over a five-year period to net out to zero for that eight hundred, and after that five-year period, the two towns would pay whatever the assessments would come out, and this is the fifth year of that. So if regionalization is something you want to pursue, there are several ways of looking at your assessment methodology to come to something that both towns would agree to. And I just gave you five different ways that you could look at it, and you could probably come up with five different alternatives to do it. If there's a will, there's a way. You mentioned that you had on Excel, something, some sort of, I suppose, mentioning earlier, sorry. Some sort of a table that looks at all of these assumptions baked in, written cheap over over that, that twelve-month period. And I think if we could see what the relative numbers are, even at this bottom line here, what the relative numbers are over time, we can better see the trend, better understand where the impact is. If you had that table, it might be something good to take back now. From what's good for a student perspective as an assessment here, I think everyone here wants what is best for their students, wants what is best for our, you know, our, our staff. All those things are what caused us to want to be in school. But the reality is, we live in, in towns that don't have unlimited funds, and so the things that are very important to us don't necessarily be the things that are running forward. And so the reality is we have to make a number work. There was a want to, that, that there's a, is there a shot that we're spinning these? So if you have that spreadsheet, you mentioned that one, right? Does that make sense? And I just kind of running off here.
I guess might be to say, it's going to give us much more detail in Excel. I don't know if it's going to get, if we're going to know the question.
I know a little bit was easier, but I thought we'll move on.
Do you think that would assist with many of them?
Well, we can show you this, and then you can decide if it answers your question, what is, if you're going to see it in town, the numbers, you attach them ahead of time.
So for the calculations that were done for the assessments, we use the same assessment methodology that is used by Julie today. And we, we did assume that revenues would not change, that's one thing, I don't know if you mentioned earlier, so revenues are staying stable going outward. But I guess the lines to focus on are, this top line represents the current region, in a similar format to what you just saw on the report a moment ago. The next section down is the combined region, again, in a similar format, and then the difference. So I can just go outward to the right, if that's what you want to see?
So the total for So these are the same numbers you saw earlier.
Yeah.
Right, the five seventeen, the six seventy-seven. And then this is seventeen. Then we get eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and out here we have twenty-eight. And this gives you the same view, by fiscal year. And you'll see these percentages change, right? You'll see this number go down, and you'll see this number increasing, getting close to zero. But it's getting close to zero. So if you scroll over.
Slowly.
And FY seventeen is broken, so that's always a comparison point.
And down here, we got the cost per pupil. And you'll see that shifting. How does the cost, if we're, oh, we're, okay. You just want to roll down. Interesting, it seemed to hit a dip.
Yeah, and then it's going back up.
Yeah, exactly. I'm trying to, so.
I just, if you were to pop that out, unlike a, like a monograph or a line graph, looks like it's a curve.
Excuse me, do I, do you focus on this number here?
Those numbers as well as, as the actual assessments.
Doesn't seem to show. Just because of the enrollment changes?
We, yeah, it's entirely due to enrollment. So in the outline here, as we did make certain enrollment assumptions, as we've already talked about, there's no way to know for sure what those numbers would be right now.
If, if you look at, like, look at fiscal year twenty-two as an example, the assessment percentage is still sixty-five, thirty-five. Yet our per pupil is now fourteen thousand three hundred and five from eighty-nine hundred and seventeen.
I don't see sixty-five, I see sixty-one.
I'm looking under fiscal twenty-two at the bottom, cost per pupil, and then assessment percentage.
The current region, you're looking at the current region band?
Yes.
Versus the regional band. Because the regional band is sixty-one percent.
Yeah, I do see that.
These percentages are based on, I don't know, some, only in the current region.
So it's definitely less in the combined.
This is why I need to...
Can I ask a question? It really comes back to that first year of 2017. And right, the difference between the current region and the combined region is 160,000. And the explanation for that is the increased revenue from regional transportation, right? But what about the increased costs that we get from the teachers? And it doesn't seem like a net of the increases and decreases.
Right. We didn't, when we did the assessments, we didn't factor in all those other things. It was the straightforward calculation based on what was currently in the assessment spreadsheet. So we didn't pull all the other stuff, and just kept the...
There would have been things explaining that, because are we only seeing part of the picture now?
We increased the budget by 2.5% each year, so it can kind of...
Do you have any contracts to cover that?
So some of it is implicit.
So every year, we did increase it 2.5%, so...
To cover the...
Yes, you can actually, you can sort that, but not everything.
Contracts.
Yeah, that includes wages, benefits.
But there are certain cost savings that are, that can be, that aren't considered.
Well, the biggest, the biggest is the revenue from regionalization of our... Right, but does that add a cost to having a teacher contract, correct? So does that add a cost?
The annual transport was 122, 122,000. The annual cost of the teacher union contract in year one was around 60.
Right, so we've got to balance each other out. Back of envelope is about a net savings of about 100,000 per year, making all those things into...
Well, I keep looking at the cost per pupil, and all the way across, it's just less in the combined region. So when you're talking about trying to do the selling points for our towns, I see that as one of the selling points, you know? Look at...
Look at, since you pointed that out, Angela, look at fiscal 17, combined region. Berlin goes from a $14,500 per pupil cost to a $4,600 per pupil cost. So that is that point that you were making earlier, Tom, about in the combined region, we're absorbing a bigger piece of the expense from the...
And then you miss some more out when you're looking at 26. It's 11.3 versus 8.6.
It is the... Okay, so if you just hit that one at the bottom, you're going from, oh, we're not that, there, if you do the current region. Sorry. I'm trying to understand. Have this number been...
That number doesn't seem right.
That, I'm having a hard time with that.
Because wouldn't you, are you adding or averaging? What are you doing to this?
No, that's just, that's just the way Tohonto is right now.
Your savings are already costs are going down across the board.
That's the way Tohonto is right now.
That's the way Tohonto is right now, is per pupil expenditure is that.
Okay.
So that's why you had, it's not adding Berlin and Boylston, because they're three separate districts.
And so there's three separate countries. And so this...
The totals actually.
So is that a weighted average of these?
No.
Separate?
Separate.
That's taking the total number of the combined region above that 11.5-ish million and dividing it by 16.
So you're taking the revenue gain that we're getting from us and dividing it by the people.
Yep.
I thought all those cost savings weren't there too.
Some are, right? 160,000 per year, or in that first year.
Because of capital.
See the difference, Larry, in the blue? I mean, in the green? Yeah, that 160,000 difference is actually what's helping to offset some of that combined difference.
When back of envelope calculation, 160,000 in the first year, the first, say, five years, and then you do some of the colonization, regionalization, plus, I'm sure there's some other things, right? I see what guys are doing.
I like what Angela pointed out, though, is how the per pupil cost goes down.
Well, I understand that, and that's a, yes, they don't care, because it's what is the town being able to pay.
No, 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 I get that, I understand that. But, but, you know, when you speak to the board of selectmen, or you speak to the finance committee, you can talk about per pupil cost and show what this trend is. Now, you know, we can, I can think it's a pretty good thing, they might not, but at least it's something you can talk about that is manageable.
If we saw that over time it equals out, over time, the net costs to each town were similar, or something along those lines, you can do some kind of a cumulative thing and say, okay, well, what's it going to cost now, but it's going to, it's going to pay back later. And that's something that we can sell to someone who has to put the hood up. And, well, I appreciate that this is an engineer talking to a salesman, so I'm...
Actually, that's not my professional career, I'm an educator.
It's just difficult when you look at what you're actually asking town meeting board, what you're asking the pin for, you're asking for a budget. That's what we approve, that's what we send for.
I'd also like to say that this was not mentioned by our presenters or us, but in all regional districts, no matter how big or how small, I don't know how to say this graciously, some towns pay more, and they pay more for a whole variety of reasons. They're wealthier, perhaps, they have more students, perhaps. You know, there are lots of reasons for that. So that's another thing we would have to be able to talk about, why. But I've never, I have no experience with the regional school district where everything was even Steven. That's not real. That's a fantasy. So you need to be able to talk about, these are the differences, this is why, and we're moving to ameliorate that as best we can. I know it sounds simplistic, but that's how I think about it.
And if we were starting from nothing, no current spend, no history of this amount spent, I would say that, that would get worse a lot better. When someone is looking at what FY16 was, and how much it cost the town for education in FY16, and you're going to compare it to FY17, which, and that's what we do all the time each year. You know, how much is the town being asked to pay? Because we have to now justify a difference, that's where the challenge is. And so even though, and again, there's a ton of margins, as Matt said earlier, there's a whole lot of potential educational benefits here. Again, I, if you're starting to that big hole, from a individual perspective, I think you're going to have to be a, you know, like Dale Arne type to be able to talk your way through.
One of the questions, Mr. Heimer knows Dale Arne, he was saying. One of the questions we, I've heard from the town on this regionalization, I know it's probably outside the scope of what we're looking at here specifically, but the question we get is, so if you do this, how will it change other costs or expenses that the town has? For example, when I often hear cited is, well, if you take some of these people now out of their pool of people as part of their insurance plan, it may raise our overall insurance premiums over here. Any experience with that, thoughts on that?
Tom, the towns are part of MIIA, which is part of a big group that actually protects the communities of those types of situations. They become a member of a larger group. So I know that that was a conversation and a big topic for discussion, you know, specifically in Berlin that came up quite a lot about what happens to the insurance plans, because the majority of their, their contributions are from staff in the schools. But the reality is, is that that's why they also joined the MIIA years ago, is so they're part of a larger organization. So it's kind of like we're a collaborative, and we get benefits through a collaborative. They get the same is true through the MIIA. And Boylston is also part of MIIA. And again, we are a big portion of the health benefits on the town of Boylston side to the school district. So they become, they, it's not that, that's not where an impact would be, whereas prior to being members of that, they would have more contribution.
And I understand, because we've had that conversation about the insurance, but are there other costs too, that perceived real or not, that you've seen go up or potentially could go up, because we need to factor that into our overall town budgets?
Like, what are you thinking, Tom, specifically?
I don't know what I'm thinking. I'm just, I'm thinking of the question that's going to be asked.
Yes.
And if we say, I don't know, then we, then we need to add some.
One point that came up at some point was in Berlin, was the fact that if you're giving retiree benefits to school personnel, that has, puts pressure on other town employees and departments. So that might be an example.
That's a good point.
Is there all your town departments offer retiree insurance, right? Your police and buyer?
I don't know the answer.
So our school employees are in the same, for the insurance.
So they're part of the same insurance in that they're MIIA, but their benefits are within the three units from the towns. Because the towns have, I think, don't quote me on this, but I think Berlin's 80/20, and I think Boylston's 75/25, and the region's 75/25 on contribution piece. So that changes a little bit for the staffing.
So, Tom, part of the answer is, the method of paying changes. So today, you have an elementary teacher who retires, it's on the town. Tomorrow, you have an elementary teacher that retires, it's on the region, and it's added to the assessment back to the town. The dollars would be different because the assessment methodology will change. So a number of costs would be paid for differently, but the cost wouldn't go away. Some costs could go away. If the town no longer is dealing with elementary payrolls, elementary warrants payroll, that could shift it over to the region, and those dollars may go away from the town, but still there's an added cost for the region, and that money gets assessed back to the towns. So the administrative costs in the towns might be lower, but they're not all avoidable. So some of that is going to come back through the assessments that you're not currently being assessed.
Good, thank you.
Good question, Tom.
The other thing I see when we look at this is, it's about a $100,000 a year savings. Based on our FY17 budget, we're talking about 0.85% from just a financial type of thing, and then we have the assessments changing and everything. I think we've all realized that we don't sell this, sell the finances of this. If anything, it's a distractor, detractor for the town.
I don't know how to, if, if nothing changes in these numbers, it's hard to picture how to sell this in Boylston, to be honest with you. It's a huge win for Berlin, and that could be great, because there are people in Berlin who have not necessarily been positive about this possibility. But it's, it's hard to fathom, no matter what the educational benefits are, and all of the other benefits that I believe are there, to ask our town, and we have no revenue. Do you know what I mean? Like, you guys have a lot of development going on, you have commercial things going on. It's, that's the irony to me about this concept that Boylston is wealthy. We, we may have people who are paying really high property taxes, but it doesn't, it doesn't add up to me on some level. It never has, around chapter 70 in particular. Because I thought revenue, like, town revenue was also supposed to enter into growth, right? Isn't there a growth factor?
There is. Will we speak on that?
No.
Actually, I'd be interested to understand how that's a factor. Is it on, is it on growth from an income perspective, or is it on business taxes?
So the growth factor is based on last year's municipal revenues compared to this year's municipal revenues. Take totals, come up with a percent growth. That's based on property taxes, recurring municipal revenues that are not interest-related, certain state aid, factor in.
Corporate taxes?
No.
No.
No. That gets into your wealth factors, doesn't get into the growth factor. They take the growth factor and increase last year's contribution by the growth factor to get to a preliminary local contribution, which is then compared to those targets I talked about earlier. But if, we understood earlier that your target, your local contribution is going to be based on 82.5% of your foundation budget, then the municipal growth factor becomes irrelevant. Nice to know that it's not going to impact your finances. So how else can we help you this evening?
Don't say.
So, I mean, I think...
I just want to get blind with the numbers, and I know that a lot of this is based on numbers at all, but to be able to sit and probably look at this, how this is something to be, to be shared with us, or how, I don't know.
Do we have access somewhere to all these spreadsheets?
Just to see, you could probably help, you could go over with the numbers if you fancy. trying to absorb and give them any factors that we would assume somewhat differently, we can probably play with that and see, you know, if that gets anywhere, I don't see as getting as big a shift as we were.
No, I think that being able to go through them, and I think that we can kind of all come together cognitively and understand some questions, because there's going to be questions, we have to digest it a little bit and understand it. But I think the next step in my mind is then, okay, the numbers are the numbers, they're not going to probably change significantly, is to start understanding the true commitment we have towards this goal, if it is still a stated goal by the group, and what are the things we're going to accomplish with it. They're not numbers, and we have to start understanding that. And I don't want to see building an argument, we have to start understanding what that argument would look like if we want to go forward with this. Why is this going to benefit us? Why is it better? Numbers are what they are. So we have to start writing the story. And I think that that is the next.
I agree.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, we kind of knew the numbers weren't going to be the be all and end all to this. It's just this helps to justify some of the things that we're thinking or hypothesizing. I mean, this is still a big hypothesis, right? Because none of these are actual concrete numbers, they're just trends and what we're seeing. I mean, we don't have the, like I said before, you don't have the crystal ball, but we had to get an idea based on all this. So I think this only confirms our thoughts about financial aspects and whether it's a gain or not. I think you as a committee have to decide, if it's not this, then why? Right? And if it's beyond financial aspect, I think it becomes efficiencies, it becomes, we have another, you know, situations that we as an administrative team are talking about staffing yet again for next year, given the decrease in Boylston where we are in Berlin. What does that mean for us for next year? We're still strategizing that each year we come across that issue. Whereas if it's regionalized, would that be an issue still? Or is it something that we can be looking at? You know, we have our ELL population, again, we're looking at that and how it's, those needs are for that one person that goes back and forth, has to fluctuate from year to year. We have, she's 0.4 in one building one year, 0.6 in another building, and then the following year it's the other way around. Well, now she's going to change her health benefits, we have to change, the salary is different, some years they're getting paid more, some years they're getting paid less. All of that changes from year to year. What does that do to the quality of how they feel they're valued or as individuals? So there's so much beyond just that figure that I think you need to think about in this year. As well as, I know Julie's talked about even her own role, and what she's had to do for the last nineteen months and.
Grants, budgets.
What was that?
We haven't, I think we haven't even gotten into that. I know that came up as a point of concern, and we were like, well, can we quantify it? Can we figure out what that looks like? Numbers are an easy way to say no to something.
Right.
I hate to say that, but that's the truth of it. We could simply just turn our back and say, okay, no, we can't afford it. That's over. But I don't think that's the end of the story.
But I think what you need to do as a committee is, even if your next step isn't so much like, yes, we want to be like, no, we don't. I think you need to think about as a committee, do you want to set for a further committee where you're including the stakeholders, such as the select board members, the FinCom members, people in the community, some parents, and put together a large board and talk about the efficiencies and not just among the six of you and us, which thank you to the administration for being here tonight, listening to, you know, the work that you want to pursue. But I think you need to decide from this point, is it worth putting out an invitation and asking people, others, to come to the table, to work with you, to strategize? Because they are going to have questions. And if you have stakeholders from a variety of departments, I think you're going to be able to strategize those questions before you start doing public forums and going out and getting all these questions and getting people up in arms, rather than trying to actually strategize together what your message needs to be. That, to me, just sounds systemic, and it sounds like, that's if, given today and everything else, you even want to pursue that piece. And I think that's your next step, is to decide if you really want to have a search committee to look at this. It's not like, yes, it's happening, and then we're going to begin next year. I mean, there's a lot of work and a lot of study and a lot of discussion that needs to be, that needs to be had. Do you agree, Matt and Mark, in that, or?
I personally think that we need to figure some things out here first, before we pull anybody else in from the outside. I think this is a significant difference in where we were headed. It's, you know, I think we thought it was going to come out, some modest advantage financially, but we didn't know that one town would pay a much bigger piece and the other town would gain a much bigger piece. And I'm certain that, I think we're all on the same page about the value of this, the need to do this, the desire to do this. But I can't picture going out of this room and talking to anybody and saying, well, Boylston's going to pay half a million more, and Berlin's going to pay 700,000 less, but it's really educationally valuable, and that's not going to fly. You know, it's just, and I could imagine if the situation were reversed, you'd be saying the same thing, right? That that's.
Well, it is, it is reversed in the sense that where Berlin's enrollment will be increasing, we will increasingly be picking up the tab. So we'll be paying 68% at the end of the 20, whatever that year is. So it's not a one-town concern, it's a two-town concern, because it's going to be equally difficult for us to go and say, well, looking at 2028, we're going to be paying more than Boylston. So I think that you're right, but I think that it's not an either-or, I think it's both towns. So I would suggest that it's not trying to ameliorate or protect one town, it's what do we want to do as a region? Two towns together, working together. That's how I view it.
And I don't disagree with that. I think our goal would be that neither town is disproportionately harmed by this. The reality of it politically is, we have to be able to sell it to the selectmen, the finance committee, the community.
Absolutely.
And right now, with these, just what we know here, it's, it would be a very difficult sell. I think there are options, but it depends on whether Berlin is open to options too, in terms of, you know, are there ways to negotiate something that makes it a softer landing, that spreads it out differently than, you know, much as Mark had suggested. So, but I feel like that process and some of that discussion probably needs to happen before we have the message that we're going to go out with.
I agree with you, and I think we would have to have some scenarios of how, if we were going to go forward, how we're going to soften that blow, using some of those suggestions that Mark threw out. If you gave transportation reimbursement allotted back to Boylston, you know, so it wasn't shared across both, like, obviously, Boylston has more students, they're going to get a higher transportation rate instead of sharing that, you know, something like that.
So there is some advantage, so one town tends to take more of a short-term view of things, one town tends to take more of a long-term view of things. And if the numbers were, as you're saying, that longer term, there's a lot of added cost to stay the same, then, again, with a long enough view of things, perhaps there could be some arrangement that would make it work. I tend to agree with Lori, it's almost, it's almost working against ourselves if we come out with this in the way right now. And I think we need to do a lot more, you know, we have to figure out a way that this can work and this could be sold, and this could make sense to both towns before we start, disturb people up. Because I'm just thinking, if these numbers were to come out in the banner tomorrow or something, we might as well move on to other topics.
Yeah, I agree with Lori. I think we need to do, we have to have more conversation amongst the school committee before we're in a position to bring more people into the conversation. I think this, when I think about this, this goes back to over two years ago, right, when we had our first study, right? And at that time, we looked at it and said, it was missing the financial piece. And I think you guys have done a wonderful job of helping close that gap. And I think we provided some feedback tonight on some things that I think that would help the way we look at it from that three-year average to a one-year average, that'll help us get a better understanding of what it is. I think we agree it's not going to be sold on the financial side. We may need to do some things there to help mitigate some of the challenges that would be in front of us. But I agree, we need, as a group, to have more conversation before we bring others in. And I think for those members that are new to this, or any of us that haven't looked at that first study in a while, I think that it'd be a really good idea to become acquainted with that, because I still have a challenge personally, other than the finances, to sell this on those other items that were in that study. Right? We make certain assumptions when it comes to educational improvements and things that were not proven in that study. Right? And that's the data that we have to go on that. I agree, from the administrative side of things, right, there should be a lower cost to that. We've had a tough time quantifying that and really being able to articulate that, whether it's quantifying or just being able to articulate it in the benefit. But I do ask that you all do take another look at that first study, because there is good information in that.
I would just remind everybody to know, we had some real concerns with some of the.
But it is what's out there, right? That's our regionalization study.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean we have to use that or rely on that or point to that. If we have concerns about some of the data or the conclusions, it's not really being well done.
I think we now have three years of research within our own district of the new regionalization, and what the impact has been educationally on our own. By having the sixth graders coming up versus what the sixth grader scores were, just even in the MCAT scores, sixth grade now, with the trajectory it's been as in one school in a region versus what it was prior to being.
But that study also pointed to other studies.
Exactly. And that's why I think you have to look at your own.
I think there are a lot of data points that we need to consider. We can't discount it, things, because it doesn't agree with where we want it to go. Right? We need just a micro, we need to be transparent with all of it, because that's what everybody else is going to take.
But I'm also just going to play devil's advocate on that. You can, the research that was shown in there about the academic changes and trends, you can find just as much research going the other direction. So just because that's the research, I think, what Lori was saying, just because that's the research that they showed, doesn't mean that there's not research that counters their findings. You could pull just as much research to show other adult peer-reviewed articles.
And that's why I say we need to be aware of that, because if you do feel there is other research that needs to be brought to light that wasn't brought to light in that thing, then it should be, because that's our regionalization study. Right? That's kind of what's on the record as our regionalization study.
But what I'm hearing, not having been part of that and not part of that conversation, you weren't either.
No, no. What was that one?
Then it may be our study, but it's possible to pay for a study and then say, I'm not sure how much value we got from that. And that's a little bit what I'm hearing, and so I think it would be helpful, I don't want to speak for you, Matt, but I think it would be helpful to know what people think of that study, because I only see it, I read it, you know, what did the committee members think of it? So I think that that would be helpful and interesting.
I wouldn't, I don't want to denigrate the work that people did. I mean, the group worked very hard on it, there were elements of it that were helpful, but there were flaws, in my opinion, and there were conclusions that didn't quite add up, and there were errors. And so taken unbalanced, I think that's why we said, now, we really need, because they attempted to do some of the financial, and it was very incomplete, and that was why it was really important to us to.
And I think this really helped solidify that piece, because I think that's probably the piece that we felt most uncomfortable with, with that original piece. And I think, you know, this was a much more in-depth analysis.
Do we have any questions for Mark and Matt? Just over there. One of the things that Tom mentioned earlier, that we would like to take a look at what the numbers would be in each year or not, because there were certain numbers, over the three-year period, certain numbers that were, or five years or so. So if we have the ability to create a summary that factors in everything, that, you know, by year, that would help us a lot. The draft that we got isn't quite getting there for us, and so that would help us understand where the needs are going to be over that 12-year period. So at least that's a starting point, and I don't think this could massively change.
Yeah.
But it is going to help us understand where the bigger need is and what's impacting it.
So are you asking, well, clearly, taking the three-year average out, putting in the one year? That's clear. But over the 12-year period, what are you asking for?
If we understand what the anticipated costs and savings are in each of those years, then we can take that spreadsheet and add however we need to.
You mean the assessments to the two communities?
Well, the costs and the, and the, the costs and the savings of either operated, as we currently are, or as one region. And then also the assessments, that's kind of like a different page on the spreadsheet in relation to the others. Earlier, again, the report was a lot of specific items, but they aren't necessarily clearly standing out on the assessments. That's kind of because there are different components affecting that. That's what I'm carrying through. So I think it's easier to see pre-assessment and then post-assessment, so we can understand because.
Would it be proper for the committee to go through U and A D and then to us?
Sure.
So channel questions, yeah, consolidates up a lot.
Sure. Absolutely.
Anything else for us? I would want to thank you, and your questions were very, very good and helpful.
Well, thank you, Matt and Mark.
Yeah, thank you.
You did a lot of work on this.
Thank you.
Yeah, maybe the question I have is, when do the regions get to a point where there's a moment in time where the aha moment says, okay, we have to move forward? Whether it's Air Shirley or the most recent, like, what was the driving force and factor behind that?
Well, I get it. Air Shirley, followed by Chatham College, no, Sunset Berkeley, Chatham College, all had the need for a new rescue, desperately. And with regionalization, they got six more points, which led into taking reimbursement pay, two and a half a year. You get a new building three years ago. So that was the big driving force for them. In other communities where there weren't a building, Amherst Pelham didn't regionalize because the dollar savings was only $50,000. And the elementary schools didn't want to lose control for that $50,000. On the other hand, was it last year, Acton?
On the other hand, was it last year, Acton Boxborough, elementary's joining the region wasn't a dollar issue. It was better programming, better educational benefits, educational license, which is the thing that I'm hearing from you tonight. Although there is at least $100,000 in your savings.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
I'd love to learn how Acton Boxborough packaged. I think we should talk to them.
Wasn't there, you know, getting rid of a superintendent or something?
Yeah, they got rid of a superintendent.
They had a savings from superintendent.
They had two superintendents.
We should try to talk to them.
They had three central offices.
Yeah, they, they had a lot.
They had, yeah, they had three central offices that were running completely separate, not like they were running-
Oh, wow.
They had a huge cost savings. I'm sorry?
Must have been a big cost savings.
They had a big cost.
But that may be something, just to learn how others did it, because everyone I've heard has always been about a new school, right? And have funded from, from the state. It's better.
We're advantaged. You know, actually, it's helping that we spend the last, however many years, decades, trying to optimize the version we have and trying to make it possible, it's possible to try and do. And so, you know, there is no huge low hanging fruit there that you can grab off and show them.
There isn't.
And so that, that's not helping us. But if we're going to focus on, any question, are the, are the, are the educational aspects going to be enough of a driver? We have pretty high performance skills. We have gone a long way towards trying to normalize the, 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 trying to get the student company into Taunton to be more on par. You know, there's a lot of great work that's been going on. It's also maybe harder to justify a big, you know, degree that's going to come out.
I don't, I don't agree with that, but that's for another night.
Here's my question, what problem are we trying to solve? That's what comes down.
Well, there are big problems we're trying to solve.
And that's what I, I think that's what you have.
I mean, I think that's, that's been documented over and over and over again. I mean, it's, to me, that piece of it is, it's been made very clear. It has been documented and it is worth really pursuing a solution. Because otherwise, I think we're going to continue to see turnover in key positions and ultimately, the educational achievement of our students will be greatly impacted if we're constantly in a mode of searching for new superintendent, new business director. So to me, that's incredibly common.
Et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
Well, I think we need to have another brainstorm session next then to talk about.
Yeah.
Not continue.
Try.
Not further into the, you have a lot of information to absorb.
Yes.
But I think that if it's appropriate to say, I think that we're all still committed to the continued conversation towards it. There's not a, a group walking away from the tables saying, forget it, it's not worth discussion. We know there's challenges, but there always will be. But I think that we're still committed to figuring what the next step would be of, you know, maybe just talking to Acton Boxborough. Personally, for me, it's, I think also hearing from you guys on where you guys would see the days and your lives spent better towards the betterment of our kids, right? To understand those stories, to understand what the impact would be, because you guys, even the principals, you guys are going to be collaborating differently than you maybe today, to understand what that looks like.
Biggest, I will say the biggest juggle I think that the three principals have is when we're trying to talk about moving things forward, or having changes or initiatives or anything like this, they all have different teacher contracts and there's different ways to move forward with that. And that's really-
It's a big deal.
That is a big deal. You know, first hand, right? It's a big deal. And so the strategy of how we do that or make those things happen has been very difficult. I will say that over time, being able, myself personally, being here for four years, have built a relationship with all three of the unions, when we're able to work together and talk about a lot of those things. I make an effort to meet and Diane meets with me sometimes with John and Ace, both at different occasions, dependent upon the topic or the agenda that we have at hand. But I meet with those unions and I try to do that. Well, I know in Taunton, we do it once a month and Diane comes with me with just about every one of those meetings. And at the elementary school, we try to do it every six weeks or so. And just to have those conversations, to build that type of relationship has taken time and that's been helpful. But there's still a different approach, because you also have your two elementary schools that are MTA and your high school that's AFT. And every superintendent that I talk to that I say, well, you know, they're like, how's it going? It's, well, it's going well. And they're like, oh, how many districts do you have? I said, three districts, two MTA, one AFT. They're like, oh, my gosh, right? And so because what that means is that we're constantly, Julie and I were just talking about this today, we are constantly in negotiations. There aren't many times or hours or whatever that's spent, because we're constantly negotiating. That's time that during the day that we're trying to prepare for, for a night meeting or negotiation after, I don't know, but we're spending time during the day to prepare for that. Every year, we have a negotiation. And, you know, I've had about 20 negotiations since I've been here in four years, between all the different unified groups and so forth.
That's depressing.
So that's a lot of work. That's a lot of time.
The last opportunity to do different things.
That's right.
Like that, to me, is hard to quantify, hard to put a number on, but-
Almost, almost impossible to quantify.
But-
Almost. Except they could probably tell us how many nights they're out.
That was what I was going to say.
Or how many afternoons they're in meetings or, you know, we could probably quantify that.
So I think it's just those types of things that, right? How do you quantify that and you don't put a value on it? Because those are, those are just some of the things that we're doing times three. Or a 240 grant is a special ed entitlement grant. It's about 12 pages long to do one grant. Karen's going to do the same grant three times. It's 12 pages long. You know, those types of, how do you quantify that?
Three times.
You know, what'd you say?
And then track it three times.
And then tracking it three times. And then when you have to do an amendment, sometimes you have to do two amendments on each grant. So in a 240 grant, she's rewriting that same grant three times and that's nine times she's writing one grant.
Although all that can be quantified in terms of time, in terms of, I mean, how many hours of yours would be back, that's easy to quantify. There's a lot of these things, a lot of the times-three things are relatively easy to quantify. And I think we've asked for that before. It can be done and as Tom said, what problem are we trying to solve? We hear about a lot of problems, but we have to put a value to that and the value that our town will get is cost. And so if what's harder to put a value on is, is, is the educational benefits. And I think that's, if that is how Acton Boxborough did it, I think that probably we're behind that story. That's how they did it, I'm sure, of some insight as to how they, how they effectively quantify that or make it meaningful to their town.
I agree, but I think we have, clearly have a fiscal responsibility to the community that we represent. And I take that very seriously. But we are the school committee, not the finance committee. So our emphasis, my emphasis, will be on the learning, the academic program, the facilities we provide, the materials we provide. I think that that's the majority of my responsibility. I understand the fiscal responsibility, because you can't, we don't work in a vacuum and we have an obligation. But we are the school committee. And I don't want to lose sight of that. I know tonight was about money, finance, I get that. But it's about more than that. So I just want to put that out there.
And I think anyone at this one table will argue the point. And I agree and I would love it to be able to adjust about the students and the education. Unfortunately, we do, do not have the ability to raise our own funds.
Well, I don't think that's unfortunate. I think, I think we have to work in hand-in-hand with our community. Now, I think that's an unfortunate thing, but I guess it's our obligation to make the educational case for the financial expenditure.
And I think you're right, we're going to have to do that.
Yeah. That's all I meant to say. I used 35 words to say something, I could have done seven, but forgive me for that.
We're working on efficiencies, don't worry.
Now you have to say that three times.
105 words.
I think we get that. So I'm thinking that maybe as a suggestion, I could hand these out to you again, just for your own review. And then maybe we can put this on the topic for the next try meeting of what, have a discussion of what you want to do. You've got time to kind of process what you heard tonight, look at some of the, some of this and then to determine. Does that make sense?
And again, agenda item, just to kind of, as for our feedback, to sort of, let everyone take a deep breath after the fact and digest a little bit. It'd be great.
Do you know when we will get a revised version of the review?
I don't know. I just asked him to, I just reiterated with him, so I'll touch base with him, Julie can touch base with him this week to see.
If, if, what you could also send out all those spreadsheets that he-
Yep. He said, he said he did some-
He reported, we didn't have, okay.
Yep. He asked, he's like, that'd be appropriate, right? I said, oh, yeah, you can give it to this group, no problem. I will say that he did compliment all of you. He said he really enjoyed the questions you asked and it was very thoughtful questions and he really appreciated it. He said it was probably one of the best bunch, he said, that he's worked with in giving these types of presentations. He said he took a lot of thought and effort into your questions and so he appreciates that.
So are we done?
Did you want to go?
I'm more worried about them.
I think we're good.
So Lori, do you want to, as the chair, asking him if you want to wrap this up?
Yeah.
Football.
You want to mallet a sound?
But I'll have a vote to adjourn.
You got it.
No, I want it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.